I know it. I don't know what you.
Alright, let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Wednesday, November sixth at six P M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Hometown Ace Hardware.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So, second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Do we have any public comments? No public comments, so we'll go right on to proclamations. Native American Heritage Month, November two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is observed by acknowledging the contributions of Native Americans long before the formation of the United States, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history of this country. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in nineteen seventy-six, and recognition was expanded by President George H. W. Bush in August nineteen ninety, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas Wisconsin is home to twelve Native nations, including the Bad River Band of Lake Superior Chipewa, Forest County Potawatomi Ho-Chunk Nation, Lot Cororee Bank of Lake Superior Chipewa Indians, Lot du Flambeau Band of Lake Superior Chipewa, Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin Oneida Nation, Red Cliff Band of Lake Superior Chipewa, Sakogen Chipewa Community, Mole Lake Band of Lake Superior Chipewa, Saint Croix Chipewa Indians of Wisconsin, Stockbridge Muncie Community Band of Mohican Indians, and Brother Town Indian Nation, and has been home to countless indigenous leaders who have defended the land, protected the water, and championed Native rights, sovereignty, and prosperity for generations. And whereas, in celebrating the traditions, cultures, and accomplishments of Native Americans, we also acknowledge our nation's history of colonialism that has inflicted discrimination, deprivation, and genocide upon indigenous people. And whereas, as we honor our Native people, their ancestral homes, and their religion, and recognize their contributions historically, today, and in the future of our community. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Milton. A time to celebrate the rich cultures of indigenous people, honor their sacrifices, acknowledge the unique challenges Native Americans face, historically and present, and recognize their continued significance in our community. In addition, Family Caregivers Month is November. So we have a proclamation for Family Caregivers Month, November two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas, during National Family Caregivers Month, we recognize more than forty million people in the United States who serve as unpaid caregivers with generous hearts and faithful devotion. And whereas, each day in homes throughout our nation, Americans with chronic or terminal illnesses, functional impairment, or disabilities receive compassionate care and support from family members and loved ones. And whereas, over ninety million Americans today are family caregivers for their loved ones. And whereas, caregivers play an essential role in ensuring the health and well-being of those most in need, managing medications, doctor appointments, and balancing work and home. And whereas, family caregivers provide a vital lifeline of connection and hope to loved ones during challenging and uncertain days, devoting immeasurable time, energy, resources. And whereas, throughout this month, let us remember these men and women who spend their days caring for others while balancing the responsibilities of their own lives, including employment and raising children. And whereas, caregiving is overwhelming, and with the responsibility of family caregivers in our country growing every year, it is important to encourage family caregivers and to provide unending support as they carry on this important work. And now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim November as Family Caregiver Month, and urge all residents to observe this month. Approval of consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Alright, public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-five City of Milton Annual Budget. So there was a notice of the public budget hearing advertised. So I will now open the public hearing to anybody that would like to participate in the public hearing. Anyone? Last call for the public hearing. I'm gonna close the public hearing. I do want the public to know that we're don't vote on the budget for two more weeks, so if you have comments or questions, please contact staff or elected officials between now and the actual budget approval. Okay, so discussion of possible action regarding two thousand and twenty-five nonprofit requests. So in the, uh, there were a couple documents that were sent with the agenda regarding this agenda item, and one of them included the policy that the council adopted, where it actually states that at this meeting, and this is how I read it, so if I misread it, please correct me, that the council has to take action. It doesn't say specifically what that action is. And as always, the final budget vote on the next council meeting is is when we vote on our budget. So, that's how I read the policy when I reviewed it. So if anybody interpreted that differently, or I misread it, you know, jump right now and tell me I don't know what I'm talking about. Since our attorney is not speaking right now, I'm assuming I read it right. And, I mean, I think you could possibly make a motion contingent upon something, or pending further information, I'm not sure if that counts as taking action or not, as the policy reads.
Well, I think it would just be that there'd be a motion to place that, uh, place a specified amount for a nonprofit in the, uh, two thousand and twenty-five annual budget for final approval, because as you've indicated, it's not gonna be approved tonight. You're just discussing what to place in the agenda at this time, or the budget, excuse me, at this time.
Thank you.
And then, then I guess I would make the motion that we just include all three proposals into our budget for discussion in two weeks.
Is there a second? And then if there is a second, then you can discuss the motion.
I'll second.
Do you want to turn your microphone on?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second regarding placing the requested amount in the budget for final adoption in two weeks. So is there any comment or questions?
I just wanna make sure I understand correctly. So we just made a motion and a second to put a placeholder in the budget to approve next council meeting, correct? For the nonprofits specifically.
Yeah, that's just, it'll be just like any other item in the budget, just that you hadn't had a had a specified amount in the budget for these items yet, so now you're, that's correct.
Okay.
Putting these amounts in the proposed budget.
Okay. I guess I just have a couple questions about just the nonprofit contribution policy. Is this the appropriate time to talk about that or ask questions?
That's, yeah, that's, that's fine. You're, that's the issue here is the nonprofit requests, yeah.
Okay. So I was reviewing, uh, review, re-reviewing the applications, and just so I understand, I think there was a lot said at the last, um, council meeting that um, I guess I wanted to maybe address, um, and I don't, I'm not really sure to go, how to go about that. So it may, led me to looking at the nonprofit contribution policy, and there's a couple things that I wanted to ask. So, it is correct that we, this policy allows us to give money to nonprofits using the current tax levy that we are allowed, right? Correct? That we have, that has played a part in the budget policy? Okay. So I, uh, I just wanted to make sure. So also, I don't recall, in June, it says we're supposed to be meeting with each nonprofit to profit to talk about their goals and objectives. That with the money that we give them, and I don't think, have we done, do we do that every June? It doesn't say when in June, it just says in a a council meeting in June to review what they basically, I'm assuming, spend their money on from the applications?
I don't recall us meeting in June and fulfilling that part of the po, that part of the po, policy. Does any, does anybody else have a different recollection?
No, I agree we haven't met with them. I agree we haven't met with them in June before, to follow up.
And I'm just asking, because I, I don't think it's a bad policy. I mean, obviously, it was placed there for a reason. And I know whenever we fill out any grant forms or ask for funds from anywhere as a nonprofit, I mean, we have to account and give receipts and tell people what we sent the funds on, right? So I mean, that just is kinda common sense. So I was wondering, can we maybe go back to that or institute that in June, moving forward?
We will make sure that's on the council agenda about next June.
Okay, perfect. And then, I guess, specifically to the Open Door Foundation, um, it, it sounded like he had a lot of not happy, uh, gripes, if you will, with some of the council and the mayor and the chief. I guess, um, I'd like to kinda take a look at maybe what does the event cost the city as a whole? Because I think there's, I think, Mayor, you touched on it, where we do give them a, a certain amount that they request and we, and we give to them. But we, I think there's a lot of other fun, uh, money that we provide and services we provide. I feel like as a, as community member, I wanna know, like, what is, what are we doing to be able to make that event happen? I am offended as a community member and as a, as a councilperson, um, the way that they chose Open Doors chose to address us in their, um, ask. And it, it felt a little bit, I, I know specifically some of the things Derek had brought up are, are not true. And I, that's not my issue. My issue is, um, I feel like this is a good community event that we all appreciate and love and volunteer for and make sure it happens. I guess I just would wanna make sure, um, you know, do we even have a liability in where those funds are going to? Because there is, it is such a large event and becoming bigger, and he did mention that he has a, some big headline acts coming up, and I feel like we, I mean, there's one way in and one way out of Schilberg, like, how are we protecting the community and making sure that this event is successful and safe to our community? Uh, and it has not, I have no, I love the event, I, I'm there all the time, and there is a business, but I think, um, what Derek brought up, I, I would like to address some of the things that he, um, he brought up, you know, as an issue, and, and what can we do to mitigate any kind of misunderstandings in the future? But then also, I think there is a certain amount that due diligence that we need to do as a counselor, as a city municipality, and, and giving of these funds to be able to regulate that they are, I don't, I'm not saying responsibly used, but, you know, there's gotta be a certain accountability.
So I can provide a little bit of background, and anybody else jump in. So there was a period of time, many, many years, because I've been here a while, where nonprofits would just come and request funding. And that was, um, a concern too of the, the council at the time, is being accountable to taxpayers of how they're spending their money. And we, um, asked for presentations, we asked for some evidence of impact, so some of that was kinda rolled into that policy. And there, um, was a specific request by a nonprofit that ended up not, not following our requests, like, that we had laid out. And then, um, the council ended up not funding them anymore because they didn't follow this policy. They didn't, you know, follow the council's requests, so I think that the council did attempt to have some accountability, and we, uh, we asked for, uh, strategic plans. And then we waived that the first year after we implemented the policy. We waived that so nonprofits could have professional strategic plans to, um, submit to the council. So, I think there's always room for improvement around this policy, certainly, and I think the June presentation or conversation was part of that. The second aspect of this is that some nonprofits request permits, and, and, you know, roles and responsibilities and expectations can be addressed in that policy too. So there's a, a couple of different, you know, there's the request, and then, then if there's permits that are required by various nonprofits, if they need them, that's another process, if I'm making sense. I don't know if, so there's always ongoing discussions frequently with staff around larger events, especially safety and accountability, and making sure that permits that are issued are followed when they're granted. And so that's an area that staff has been talking about improving too. So if someone takes out a, and is granted a permit for an event, and they blatantly disregard what's in the permit, or they hold an entire event without a permit, you know, that's, that's a safety issue too, and, you know, our number one responsibility as council is to ensure safety of our residents in all areas that impact their lives, so there's a couple of different areas that we can improve upon, and I don't know if that's, that's not on the agenda though. So as I'm, you know, giving you some background information related to this agenda item, that is not specifically on the agenda.
I believe, if I remember correctly, the first, June, after the first year we implemented the policy, we may actually have had them report. Because I remember there being once where we had, at least some of the nonprofits report on how the funds went and stuff like that. I think the first year we did that, and the entities have been the exact same entities every year since, as well. So maybe that's why that maybe fell to the wayside, but, um, that's, I know, I remember at least once we did that.
And I do agree that if we have a policy, it's our obligation as a council to follow our own policies. And so, in this area, we fell short because we didn't have, we didn't follow that policy this year.
Do agree, however, that the presentations did become very lengthy in trying to bring all that information, and that perhaps there's, um, a two-way program or, uh, some type of setup to bring that information that could be done on paper and sending in how they're doing it, the way that Ryan is citing how the committee suggested all that information be given to us. Or there could be a committee that that information is filed through and, uh, provided, and then the part that's actually given to the public on the presentation could be just that much, and we'd know that this information has been submitted.
So, I, so the, the motion and the second, bringing it all back, and and I'm not trying to end discussion, that's not what I'm doing, so feel free to, free to comment, but trying to bring it back to, there's a motion and a second around, do we want to have a placeholder for funds at our next meeting to finalize the budget for nonprofits? And then, so that's the motion and the second, and if there's other, I guess, information that you would like before the next meeting, it would be appropriate to ask staff to gather that information prior to voting on the budget? If there's some things that maybe should have happened at the June meeting, but it's information we could request for the next, uh, meeting for your consideration, you can make that be part of it too.
Can we, January, relook at the policy, just reglance, give it another look through? See if, make one of minor tweaks or something like that? Can Jan, I wanna push it to January, though, out of the
So, I think that's something that we can vote on, on an agenda, on an upcoming agenda. Put that on there.
Yeah, it was just intended as a request, not as a actionable item.
Yeah. So any other further comments or?
I'd like to answer one of your questions. This past July, the July fourth weekend, the city spent in labor and using our equipment eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. So that was on top of the donation that we already made to Open Doors, uh, but you requested that number, and that's the number. And that is between both our police and Public Works.
Any other further questions or comments regarding the motion and the second to put a placeholder in the budget for the requested funds for the next meeting? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding the two thousand and twenty-five annual budget preparation. And there should be possible direction, discussion and possible direction regarding that. So, this is the time for you to ask for staff to provide, um, more information, and does anybody have any comments on, on anything, including staff?
I'd like to mention, uh, at our last meeting, uh, we did need to reduce our budget by twenty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-four to meet the expenditure restraint level. Um, we did do that. Uh, several minor changes were, uh, reducing categories by a thousand dollars or less, uh, such as municipal budget equipment maintenance, uh, municipal building, uh, conferences, street lighting equipment maintenance, street maintenance fuel, uh, to make these numbers more accurately reflect what the city has been spending over the last several years. There was one large reduction to make that twenty-four thousand. That was a reduction of twelve thousand dollars, uh, to our comprehensive plan update. So that number instead of seventy-five thousand dollars is now sixty-three thousand dollars. The estimate we were given for that comprehensive event update was anywhere between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars. We budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars, but with the work that staff has done on the strategic plan, we're confident that we can, uh, do some work for the comprehensive plan update in-house to reduce those costs. Um, I want to mention that we still are planning on funding an additional officer with our budget plan, and, uh, Chief would like to speak for a second on that.
Thank you. Um, my request, uh, from council tonight would be to get more or less a blessing to begin the hiring process. If the officer is approved in the two thousand and twenty-five budget to get us up to thirteen full-time officers. The reason for my request to start now is I have a seat in the recruiter academy that begins January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I've tried to get that officer hired prior to that start of the academy. The downside to waiting and starting the process in January is I cannot get the officer onboard until June. Then the officer would have to go to academy up north, not a local academy. By the time the officer comes onboard, we're talking the end of twenty twenty-five. So, despite the council hopefully approving that officer, the thirteenth officer for twenty twenty-five, the reality is the officer wouldn't actually start then until twenty twenty-six. Albeit, the purpose of this is to avoid the pitfall of twenty twenty-four with the reduction of our SRO from the Milton schools, and, uh, the, the, is strained with overtime for staff. And obviously, we don't know what the future holds if staff are gonna stay or go. So, it's a tight turnaround to post a job this evening and recruit and hire and complete all the steps, but, um, I'm confident we could do that in lieu of waiting till January to start the process and being back essentially one year. So, that's my request is to get the green light to begin that process with the assumption that we'll get that officer in twenty twenty-five.
I have a quick question. Obviously, we're, the city's growing, and it makes sense, obviously, for another officer. Can you just give us a, a quick overall picture of like what that would look like? Like, what does that allow us to do with that thirteenth officer?
Well, outside of sh, staffing shortages, where we're reducing our po, uh, presence in the school district, it would basically allow us to create two officers per shift. Right now, in the absence of supervision, since there's only th, three supervisors on the department, we sometimes have one officer covering the entire city for a period of time, outside of our busy evenings and certain days of the week. This would allow us to have two officers on every day of the week, every shift of the week, which is a huge officer safety issue. The county, we can't rely on Rock County Sheriff's Office for continual backup because they're still short-staffed, and we oftentimes are actually asked for mutual aid from their agency, which sometimes leaves our agency without an officer in the city for coverage for an unknown period of time. So the whole purpose with adding this thirteenth officer is to avoid those pitfalls where we're depriving our city of protection and still allowing another officer on the streets to back up our officer more readily.
Totally makes sense. Quick question, though. So is that always the process? Is like you have, because the last person we hired, they're having to go through the academy, right? Is that the normal pro, I'm just curious, is that the normal process?
That's the process that's been impacting our agency, and we're not alone. Most agencies, uh, I just That's the process that's been impacting our agency and we're not alone, most agencies, uh, I just. Spoke with the, as part of the advisory board for the Criminal Justice Academy at Blackhawk Tech, their director said. A hundred percent of the last two classes, every recruit has been sponsored by an agency, so there's no pre-service recruits that just come in on their own. They're already hired by an agency, so beneficial to them because they're paid, they're employed, get the academy for free. So it's very rare unless we would get a lateral officer or somebody that just. Come in and off the cusp of um, school mental care.
And Eric and I can speak to that because we went to a session at the League of Municipalities Conference. That was, the whole session was about police, re- police officer recruitment, retention. And hiring cha- challenges throughout the state of Wisconsin and what different municipalities are doing and. If I remember correctly, all three of the speakers were pay, doing what we're doing. And, and the other folks that spoke from the audience were doing the same thing, right? Pre-hiring, paying for the academy, because that's, that's really what we have to do right now.
And, and just as a follow-up, the academy is reimbursed, the costs for that are reimbursed by the State Department of Justice. Upon successful completion of the academy, and that includes lodging and per diems. So Paul, with the adjustments you made, are we now currently bud- uh, balanced then, or is there still a shortfall?
We are currently balanced, uh, we will have, uh, we are currently balanced, uh, proposed budget is uh, five million. Eight hundred and ten thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars, and that is a three point six eight percent increase from the previous year. However, I'd like to note that uh, property tax collection is only a point five four percent increase. With our growth, that uh, point five four would probably actually reflect into a, a reduction for our taxpayers.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask that question, cause I wanna make sure that was clear too, before we even made a decision on police officer. Do we have to still cut a whole lot, or are we pretty much good to? Do the fine-toothed comb in two weeks?
We're good.
So, okay. Does, I assume it needs a motion then to prove the officer moving forward?
No, that's not an agenda item, so what I think the chief would be asking under this agenda item is. Confirmation that you'll be including the cost of the police officer. For additional police officer in the twenty twenty-five budget. So if he know, if he knows at least that's, you commit to placing it in the draft budget at least, then he can have some confidence in moving forward with this process.
And would that be in, that would not be in the form of a motion though, it's just more, mostly hearing from all of us, or would we need to make that into some form of motion that's tied to the budget?
So. I guess you can just confirm that, or you can s- you can confirm that it, that it will remain in the draft budget, if that would be. Of assistance, if you want to do a motion to say that, that additional officer cost remain in the draft budget.
I would like to make a motion then that the um, additional officer, the thirteenth officer uh, remains in the budget then.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Wanna post? Okay. Any um, other updates on the, the budget or questions or comments?
I do have one, uh, one of the items in our budget is Badger Books, which are electronic poll books. Um, and that is something that some municipalities here have, some don't, um, that I just wanted to share this information. Over the last two weeks, I've talked to our election officials to gauge their interest in it a little bit more. Um, when we had our election official gathering prior to this uh, last night's election, asking them a couple of questions, what their thoughts were. So I just wanted to share that they are really in support of learning that if um, it's included in the future budget, in the two thousand twenty-five budget.
And it's currently included right now?
Uh, yes, and the current uh, balance budget includes uh, five Badger Books. Um, so that's what is recommended based on our population by the Wisconsin Elections Commission and the vendor.
Anything else from council or staff? Any further direction for staff from council? Okay, um, I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item then, okay? Discussion and possible action regarding a residential developers agreement with Keystone Real Estate Investments LLC.
City of Milton requires a residential development agreement for residential subdivision developments. Uh, Keystone Real Estate is developing a residential PUD planned unit development on the corner of Saint Mary and Parkview Street. On October fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four, the Planning Commission approved a specific implementation plan for a planned unit development on the corner of Saint Mary's and Parkview Drive. The city requires a development agreement with all residential PUDs. The residential development agreement outlines the roles and responsibilities of the city and the developers, sequencing in the project. And the developers' payment in lieu of parkland dedication. Uh, the PUD involves the construction of ten four-bedroom rental houses. The developer intends to be con- against construction still this fall, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, once complete, the developer will maintain a private roadway and dedicate the water and sewer extensions to the city. Uh, agreement has been reviewed by the developer and the city attorney. There's no fiscal impact to, to the City of Milton related to the subject development agreement. Costs incurred by the city's engineering consultant and the city attorney will be invoiced to the developer. Additionally, the city will receive the requisite parkland dedication fees to be allocated to the Parks Fund. City administration recommends approval of the proposed development agreement with Keystone Real Estate El- Investments LLC.
Questions? Or comments?
I, I just had a comment, uh, one of our conversations about this project is who might. Um, take advantage of, uh, of it and um, I happen to be in a um. A meeting on housing today with a group of people from uh, around the county. Um, I mentioned this project because the topic was kind of diversity of, of types of. Housing and some unusual kinds of approaches. There was a representative there from SSM Health. Um, who was delighted to hear about this, uh, because um, as she mentioned. Uh, they are always seeking places um, where doctors. Who are coming into their system can rent homes. And um, you know, she didn't know about this uh, development, but um. It sort of confirmed in my mind that there indeed might be a market for this kind of housing.
Any other?
And it's going at the corner of, or east where, East Saint Mary Street and Parkview Drive?
So they did a.
It's going in there, there's not a lot of space there.
Ar- Arthur Drive.
Arthur Drive, okay, I was gonna say Parkview Drive and East Saint Mary is pretty full of other things, so.
My apologies.
Arthur Drive makes more sense, okay, thank you.
And they did a, they did a reconference with the Plan Commission, or what was it called?
That was not that development group.
Did they? I thought they did.
They may have a while ago, but they've gone through the specific, or the general and specific implementation plan process with the Plan Commission.
Okay.
I, I would move approval of the um, residential developers agreement with Keystone Real Estate Investments.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Did everybody vote on?
Yeah, do we have to correct and put, make sure that we say Arthur Drive, cause it's, doesn't say Arthur Drive in the document?
It doesn't say Arthur Drive in the document.
Does Parkview?
It is correct in the document. It's listed by the parcel number in the document.
Okay, so we passed. Motion, and what is your question, right?
That was my question.
It's identified by its legal description.
Okay.
So you did read the document, okay?
Thoroughly.
Oh, that's what you said, discussion and possible action regarding costs for relocation of a gas main required to complete the East High Street Utilities. Project.
Uh, if you recall, the uh, East High Street Utilities Project was approved for construction in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the, uh, includes water main, a water main loop for the east uh, for the crossroads industrial park. And an extension of sanitary sewer along East High Street, the water main work is completed. Uh, the sanitary sewer uh, work is not complete at this time, uh, that will provide service to undeveloped parcels along East High Street. Uh, the reason the project is not complete is because there was a gas main that was found that was unknown during uh, or until construction. Uh, discussions with Baxton Woodman indicated that the gas main was not located during the design phase of the project. And even uh, during some of the initial construction regal- uh, Digger's Hotline locates. Um, the utility was installed in two thousand fourteen and was permitted by the town of Milton. We Energies will not uh, proceed with any relocation work until the payment for the proposed relocation has been made. Uh, if the utility was known of, uh, the sewer would have been relocated into a different location as part of the original design. Um, the costs for the relocation of the sewer were estimated by Baxton Woodman to be around eighty-five thousand dollars. To try to find a more cost-effective solution, we reached out to We Energies and they provided that the cost to relocate the gas. Uh, main would be around sixty-eight thousand. Uh, and we had some further discussions with uh, We Energies regarding the project and they've agreed to cover half of the charge. So that the city would only be responsible for half of the cost or approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. City administration recommends approval of the com- compensable cost for the gas main relocation.
And, and so We Energies is gonna do the relocation for us?
Uh, yeah, it's a We Energies facility and We Energies is handling the design and construction, they'll probably hire a contractor to do the relocation. But we won't have any involvement with the actual construction work. For the, for the gas main.
Does the DNR per- do permits or something?
That will fall on, under We Energies, their.
Their permit.
Process to go through, yeah, the only involvement we would have is, there's been communication between Baxton Woodman and We Energies to. Ensure that the gas is relocated to a position that's not going to conflict with our utilities.
Okay, and now we know it's there.
And we know it's there now, so we have, we either have to move the gas main or we have to relocate the sewer. Had we known the gas main was there, we would have put the sewer out in the street, which would have cost more on the, uh, you know, as part of the original project bid. But I think this is a reasonable outcome, given where we are.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the compensable cost for the gas main relocation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, anything else for anyone, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries discussion and possible action regarding a lease with Carl's Place for vacant land.
Uh, Carl's Place has requested to lease parcel V twenty-three fourteen sixty-eight uh, point two A, uh, for research and development. Uh, they intend to place a driving, it's a small four and a half acre parcel north of Carl's Place of current facility. Um, they intend to place a driving that range there to test their equipment. Uh, city's plan has identified the parcel as a stormwater retention facility for Clausen quality chocolate. But CQC does not need the parcel at this time. Uh, the lease is for a five-year term and the city reserves the right to sell, develop, or allow development of the parcel during the term of this lease. Carl's Place will pay the city twelve hundred dollars per year, similar to other parcels that the city leases out. And most importantly, the city would not be responsible for mowing and snow removal on the sidewalk during the term of the lease. Uh, city recommendation uh, is to approve the lease with Carl's Place for parcel V twenty-three fourteen sixty-eight point two A.
That sounds very scientific and elegant.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease with Carl's Place for parcel V twenty-three fourteen sixty-eight point two A.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries discussion and possible action regarding Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash nineteen to accept the dedication of improvements. And authorizing reduction of letter of credit for NG Tower Hill Land LLC.
So this resolution is to accept the dedication of improvements for Tower Hill Meadows. That's the uh, extensions of Evergreen Lane, Ash Lane and Red Hawk Drive. Uh, between the recently completed uh, Red Hawk Farms subdivision and the previously completed Tower Hill subdivision. And uh, the Greens subdivision. The um, public streets are complete through the second lift of asphalt, the only work that remains is some restoration. Uh, Baxton Woodman has completed uh, a review of the project and confirmed that the work is complete. The uh, letter of credit amount would be reduced to twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Um, well, so that's the uh, resolution that is uh, um, presented here tonight for recommended, recommending approval.
Is there a motion?
I'd move approval of Resolution twenty twenty-four nineteen. Uh, dedication of improvements and authorizing reduction of letter of credit, uh, Tower Hill Land LLC.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any comments or questions, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, that motion carries, alright. General items. Committee reports.
I have something for general items, I don't know who this goes to, but um. The new stop sign that we're all talking about on Parkview, is there any way we can get like flashing lights or something there? Um, something that would maybe more highlight the new sign, the newness to the signs?
I'd have to look at the MUTCD, that's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it's approved by the uh, Wisconsin, or the. Federal Department of Transportation, I don't know if you can put lights on the sign, uh, the red flags are allowed. Um, the only other thing that I, I know we could do right now would be advanced warning for the stop sign, stop sign head type sign.
Yeah, I take that road all the time and there's just tons, well. AI might have blown through it the first time, I didn't even know it was there, um, the red, I know, right? Yeah, cover your ears, the red, uh, the stop sign blends in with like the red from the, the new building. And then there's so many large trucks coming and going, I don't know if there's something temporarily we could put there.
I feel like our attorney is looking at you with skepticism. Okay, so I just have to add, like, that may or may not have happened to me too. This is not considered team building, but, so. Uh, one question I do have is because I did walk, I did walk the dog there. And I, I stood at the speed limit sign and people are going like thirty-five miles an hour and there's like not even a block. After the speed limit sign and, and I cannot see that stop sign. When it gets, um, and I was walking, so I was not gonna run it, but uh, I can't see it, it does. Like it, there, I, if we, I noticed the other stop sign intersections have two streetlights. And that one only has one streetlight and that's a very dark intersection and you truly, I can't even see, and I don't think I'm colorblind yet. I can't see the orange flags either, so, I mean, I don't know what we can do within the regulations, but it really is. Like I stood there for like twenty minutes and watched people slam on their, on their brakes at dusk, so I'm worried.
Steph will look into options.
Yeah, thank you. Get a lot of Our Fathers for me.
And I'd like to point out that I have stopped there every time.
I, I will say, our officers are obviously aware of it, so we're making plenty of stops, there are no citations being issued. Contrary to what my, people might be putting up, um, so it's more of like educational stops and more of a safety preventive, so. They've been pretty visible, I think they've had probably over thirty stops since they've been up. Um, I have driven the path during daylight hours, if you're going the speed limit, which might be some of the issues here. You can see the signs, you know, the, the flashing speed of this radar does kinda help draw your attention to the terrorists and signage. Because it's been there long enough where people are accustomed to it and there's not usually that enforcement arm attached with that radar. So I think if the speeds are followed, and they are not oftentimes on Parkview, that is a contributing factor and then just people's normal routine where they know where signs are. And this is something new, so in time it will become the norm, but we will look into alternatives to remedy it sooner than later.
Yeah, and I can confirm, there was a police officer sitting there. I don't know if anybody saw the police offer, police officer, cause it was dusk. Cause that was not impacting anybody's speed.
I saw it this morning.
But but it's a, it's really just at dusk that it's an issue.
I've also only.
It's great. Yeah, yeah, and I'm not complaining that I, that I may or may not talked to anyone. I know people that have talked, though.
Ever or?
Ever. Any other general items or confessions? Okay. Committee reports. Staff reports. Not much going on at all. Chief?
I'll kick things off. Um we started a hiring process tonight um for an officer. Um we, I also just initiated a promotional process for our school resource officer position. Officer Ryan Schneider has indicated he does not want to go into the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. He's been in the position for eight years and like to go back to the patrol responsibilities. Um so we'll uh identify that officer this year and then rotate that officer into the position towards the tail end of the school year. Um Officer Craig Quarter uh successfully passed phase two of the academy last week um and he'll be graduating in one month from now on, December sixth from the academy and joining, uh I guess rejoining us in field training then on the ninth of December. Um we had a trunk or treat last weekend. Um we recovered, I shouldn't say recovered, um we're provided with ten pounds of prescription medication. That number has continually declined over the years just because of our daily use drug drop box and um restricted prescribing practices also. Um and I just wanted to say kudos to the election officials and city staff for yesterday's smooth elections. Um I heard nothing but good things um from all staff. It was a very long day for all of you guys, so thank you for your efforts. That's all from PD.
Hi, Barry.
Um we unfortunately did not receive that flexible facilities grant to remodel our lower level. Um it's still a need for us to update that space, so I'm gonna be keeping an eye out for potential funding opportunities for that. Um we have a draft of our strategic plan and hope to have an approved plan in January and I will be sharing that with everybody once that's approved. Um Jamie and Denise are currently at the Wisconsin Library Association Conference in Green Bay that's going on right now. So hopefully they're learning lots of great new things to bring back to the library. And then next week, the other Ashley at the library will be heading to Saint Louis for the library marketing conference. So lots of learning going on right now.
Just wanna say I did meet representatives from one of the municipalities that received that grant. So Eric was, I don't think you were at that table then, but yeah. I booed them. No.
I do have a general, general item, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, for staff reports if you want.
Um, Mark?
Uh the final brush collection of the year took, is taking place this week. It may have been completed today, actually. Um leaf collection is ongoing for the next week, week and a half, depending on weather. And it's, um parks are mostly closed, so. Getting ready for winter.
Kelsey, thank you.
Just working through finalizing the budget process and moving into tax bill preparation, so. Everything.
Everything's going as planned this year. Jenny?
Well, we had an election yesterday. It went well. Oh, I'm just wanna give a couple notes. Um so our total voters was three thousand four hundred and fifty-eight and one thousand six hundred and eighty-four of those were absentee voters. So those are in-person absentees plus then uh by mail. And just for comparison, in two thousand twenty, we had three thousand three hundred and seventy-five voters total, so it was an increase. Um one thing I really, I can, I can spend all night thanking people, but um the couple people is uh we have uh Treasurer Bannick and Kaylee, our administrative assistant. They processed this, processed three hundred and thirty-four registrations, so compared to two thousand twenty, um we actually had two hundred and thirty-two, so that was a significant increase. Um and we had very few lines at that location, so it ran really quick. Um so I really wanna thank them. Uh Public Works, um as always, they helped with setup. They, this was fabulous. There was a couple of things that we changed um last minute uh for additions. They were able to help us even just, um we had some lights go out uh the day before the election, so really appreciate that. Um uh Police Department, um one thing that we did uh prior to this election was we modified the flow because we knew there was going to be an increase of people. Um and with that, those modifications, we needed some assistance from the Police Department, so Police Department, uh the administrative staff and um our officers were just absolutely fabulous and just open to all of those my suggestions and thoughts. And so I really wanna appreciate them uh for doing that. Uh we had a, an amazing greeter, Ashley, who's administrative assistant. She was um just, we had so many compliments on her because she got everybody in to this room pretty quickly. So uh our average wait time was less than fifteen minutes in the morning. Um and then after that, uh based on information that I saw from, from uh things posted is our ever, was three to five minutes. So I thought that was really great. Um and that's for voting and then slightly longer if you needed to register. Um so again, everyone was on s- um all hands on deck. It was just, it went really, really smoothly. And then the last person is also um Officer Schneider, who helped me. He helped me at the end of the night. We had, what, he coordinated for one of the, a person from the Sheriff's Department to escort me down to the, the county to make sure our ballots got to the county um in a really timely fashion. So um I really wanna appreciate everyone who made it, made it go really smoothly. So then two thousand twenty-five elections, already we're gonna pivot into those, just a couple of dates that are coming up. So we have three, all the person seats and the mayor uh that will be up for reelection in two thousand twenty-five. November fourteenth is the first day that I will have the candidate papers available on the website and in City Hall if you'd like to pick them up. Um I can also email that to anyone that would like to request that. And then Sunday, December first, that's the first day for candidates to circulate papers. And if there is um any incumbent that's not seeking reelection, the declaration of non-candidacy deadline is Friday, December twenty-seventh. So just pivoting right into two thousand twenty-five.
And.
I'd like to echo Jenny's comments. Um Kelsey, Kaylee, Ashley, all the elected inspectors. Uh Police Department helped out, Public Works helped out. Um it was really a good team effort to make that sure that election ran smoothly. Um specifically, uh I'd like to give my kudos to Clerk Salvo orchestrating all this, working really hard over the last month and a half, two months to make sure everything did run smoothly. Um it ran really smoothly and uh I'm proud to hear from the community how appreciative they were of all those folks that worked hard and a special kudos to Jenny because this wouldn't have happened without her hard work.
Yes, and let's just embarrass her some more, but Jenny took, uh she took um a lot of time and consideration and attention to make sure that everybody that was working the election knew the new flow, how the traffic was gonna go, including me and all the, the election workers. And um it it did go smoothly and I was here for a short period of time and like it was amazing. So we have great volunteers and great staff um that that all work together to make um to make it a good experience for everyone and not a lot of long waits, so thank you for that. And Ryan, you said you had a general item you forgot.
I wanted to mention that the governor was in town last week at the Milton House, taking a tour of the Milton House and learning about the educational programs they're doing. So anyway, the tour went really well.
That's super exciting. And Eric and I went to the legal municipalities um conference and we lea- we learned a ton. Um I sat in on a session that particularly was very interesting and I'll bring back more discussion and information for staff about it is like AI and how it can be helpful safeguards, new AI products out there for municipalities. I'm sure probably the library knows all this because they're so advanced, but there's a lot of really positive things that we can accomplish without eliminating positions, but just making workload a little bit easier. So I I love the AI stuff and all the small community groups that we sat in on and um just a lot of people, a lot of information and Eric can talk to you a little bit about his experience.
I can add, there were a couple, of course, I I went to some sessions on TIF and downtown development and the grant writing, some of that, that was interesting. But it was almost more beneficial was the different contacts that I made and meeting different people. And there was a roundtable where you would sit with other similar municipalities of your size and hear their problems. And it's also common, it's very similar things. And so I guess I I always feel like there's us up here, but there's so much more resources out there that I got to meet and I guess moving forward, I think that more of us should try to go it's uh together cause I think it would be that much more fun for us all to share in those experiences, but it definitely was worth my time. I went two days and I'll, I'll go. Next year will be September seventeenth through nineteenth in Milwaukee. Um but it was well worth my time and I had a lot of fun and thanks for inviting me. It was great.
Alright, team building, super easy, super easy. Um so which would you prefer? Daylight saving time, springing forward, falling back, or just sticking with standard time?
Standard time.
Standard time.
Standard time.
Okay, I like to, I don't like it. I don't like springing ahead and falling back, but I still wanna keep it.
Daylight savings.
Boston.
Yeah, da- daylight savings all year.
I don't wanna go against the side here, but standard time.
I don't really have an opinion. Alright, I'll go, I'll go with my team here on the left side.
That's right, that's right.
This.
Well, if you pick either one, it ends up being the same, so it doesn't matter. I'll, I'll go with standard, I guess.
It does matter because one has your kids waiting for the bus in the dark and one doesn't. Look at, he's like incredulous, like that is even a thing, but it's true, it's true. Audience? If you were an elementary principal.
I I rode the bus to school all through grade school, cause I live in the country, so I.
And and you lived with daylight savings time?
Not in the winter.
Yeah, you fell back.
Well, a lot of ways I've fallen back, obviously, but.
That's another confessional meeting for another agenda. So our, our audience? Okay, so we're like evenly split. Did everybody go? Yes, only in the City of Milton will we have different clocks than everybody else.
That happens in Indiana.
I know. Well, we could just flip it back and forth every year. It could be different, um just to keep things exciting. Next meeting, November nineteenth. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move second, third.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we adjourn.